Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this work session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Schimpf.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt. Mrs. Juwan.
Yes, here.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda and we're ready to get started. Mr. Schrader, would you lead us?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. I transmitted this request, but I'll turn it over to Brian here in just a minute. The City of Waterloo applied for a grant through the Iowa Department of Transportation Aviation Division to prepare this airport zoning ordinance. It replaces a previous one which is quite old. But we received the grant and contracted with Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments to prepare that. They have prepared that. It is now going through the approval process. So I'll turn it over to Brian from Intercog just to give a little brief overview of that and then answer any questions that you have. So, Brian?
Thank you, Eric. Brian Schoen with the Intercog office. Thank you for your time, Mayor and Counsel, this evening. Try and make it worthwhile for you, give you an overview. We've got, it's about a 20-page ordinance, so we'll try and cut that down, obviously, into just some overview. I've got, I laid a sheet at each one of your desks. On one side, you'll see that there's a process overview that, in very short, it's numbered, gives you an idea of when we started this process from the DOT hiring an aviation engineering firm to awarding the grants to various airports around the state of Iowa through the Council of Governments State Association to getting down to work with the various jurisdictions. We've got three jurisdictions that are concerned or are party to this particular ordinance around the Waterloo Airport. So we've got City of Waterloo, City of Cedar Falls, and Blackhawk County. The ordinance, as I said, is about 20 pages in length, and so it is built off of that model that was given to us from the manual, again, through that aviation engineering firm. And if you would be so inclined, if you would go ahead and just take a quick look at the other side, the one with the checkmarks on it. The checkmarks actually gives you more or less a Cliff Notes if you, or an abbreviated version of the ordinance itself. As Eric indicated, this is an overlay ordinance. It acts much like a floodplain ordinance, in so much as that the city's regulations that are not affected by this are still all in place. We're not changing anything, the zoning subdivision or any of those kinds of things. What we're doing is simply updating an ordinance that is quite dated. The ordinance itself in the City of Waterloo and Blackhawk County and City of Cedar Falls, the origin that we could find was about 1956, 1957. There have been updates since then between the jurisdictions and so hence the reason the DOT wants to see the ordinance updated so that we've got protections in place for the airport itself. What you'll see then is you wind your way through the ordinance. If you're familiar with city ordinances, there's a pretty common format. There's typically an introduction, there's an authority statement, there are definitions, and those kinds of things that are legal requirements typically at the front. There's a preamble that describes what we're doing. Again, what we're doing or what we're proposing to do here is have you set a public hearing so that we replace, or yeah, we rescind the current ordinance and replace with this new ordinance is what we're doing, again, knowing that it is an update. The ordinance, as you wind your way through it, there are a series of definitions. They're very technical, but there are probably about five or six pages of definitions that you will see. From your perspective as mayor, council, and primarily as staff, as you look through the ordinance itself, there are a series of tables. And the tables then set the polygons, the polygons being the areas on the map. And what you'll see then is there's a corresponding map that shows areas A, B, C, D, E. Not unlike your zoning ordinance, they're defined on a map. They are set by FAA regulations and were given to us by DOT. So those areas of protection, if you will, are in and around the airport with a circumference around the airport, and those dimensions then are set by the FAA. And again, you'll come to a series of tables. It'll define the dimensions on those polygons, and then you're going to come to a very big table at the very end, which is all the land uses, the potential land uses. And you're going to see a long list of everything from single-family home to industrial to commercial type uses. And what that is intended to do is then to work across all three jurisdictions because after all, all three jurisdictions view individual uses differently in their zoning ordinances. And so what that is, is more or less, I guess the term I would use is that's our Rosetta Stone, to get us between the three jurisdictions so that we don't have to ferret things out through their particular zoning ordinance. And so you'll come to that, you'll then see that there's an Airport Zoning Commission and an Airport Board of Adjustment. Those, we had proposed in the ordinance to draw from the existing planning and zoning commissions from the three jurisdictions. Likewise with the Board of Adjustment, we're not going to create new appointees. We're going to draw from existing people who are familiar then with the nomenclature and the terminology. And again, staff would be staff, excuse me, between the three jurisdictions. So just hypothetically, to walk you through how this is intended to work, is not unlike any other rezoning requests, if I'm a property owner and I wish to do something, I come in to the Planning Department, Planning and Building Department, and the staff then looks at the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, building code, and so on and so forth, the floodplain ordinance. This is an additional ordinance that they then will be looking at to determine if there's a height issue. And that's really what you're regulating here is height and making sure that we're underneath those height limits. And so staff then will review, and the table then will help them in the back determine if there's compatibility or not compatibility, but more importantly, probably more study by staff because there's going to be a series of questions about each use that the staff is going to want to know. They're going to want to determine whether or not the height of something is too tall, too short, and so there's a review process then for staff. So then this will become part of that staff review that then comes to the Planning Commission and then on to the City Council. So it's a piece, an integrated piece then into the overall review process. Again, we're replacing an existing ordinance and putting in place a newer version. It will be much more digital. The maps will all be then in GIS format, and those will then be turned over to the three jurisdictions so that things can be done online and be checked then that way as well. So, questions, comments, real quick?
Brian, is there a summary of what the significant changes are from the old to the new?
We don't have a summary per se, Sharon, just the overview. Since the text that we found was from 1956, it's a complete rewrite from back to front. So standards are still there in terms of aviation protections. The intent of the ordinance itself is then to protect airplanes coming in, coming out of that particular airport and from a height standpoint and not allowing uses then to create nuisances around the airport itself. So it's a concentric rings. Again, if you go back, I've got the original ordinances, and you go back and look, it sets up similar types of areas, protection areas. The rings, the maps are similar. Again, this is an updated version of that.
And if a person wanted to change something on affected land, they would go to their city ordinance, City Planning Department? That staff would then convene the whole group to make a decision?
What we've intended is that, and we'll just use it for instance, if the land that I own is in the City of Waterloo and I've got a request, I'm going to go to the City of Waterloo and work with their staff. If I need a variance request or something of that nature, then I might go to that larger board or that larger body. But if I'm found to be compliant or staff reviews my request, finds it's in compliance, then I'm going to stay with the City of Waterloo. I do not need to go to those other three jurisdictions.
The staff could make that decision without having to convene the whole group?
Right, right, right. It gives them the authority then to determine compatibility. And you'll stay then within the jurisdictions. It's just we've got to have the same ordinance because we've got one airport that's affecting three jurisdictions. So in essence, we've got a mirror ordinance working its way through all three jurisdictions.
Brian?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Brian, I was wondering, okay, so this has zone A, B, C, D, and E?
Yes.
And then it lists different things down there in the table that you have. And so if this was first put out in the mid to late 50s and now we're redoing it completely, has, have there been any changes at all? I know you said that there weren't, but any changes to those different zones because or that as a result would make certain changes that have occurred in structures or whatever in those different zones since the late 50s that have to be grandfathered in?
Yeah, and actually, we've got provision at the back of the ordinance. I'm glad you bring that up. That's actually at the back, there's a nonconformity section. And the nonconformity then basically accepts the fact that if there's something there, Pat, that was there, it's lawful, that it's going to be allowed to continue, it can be repaired, but you can't tear it all the way down and put it all the way back. It's probably not unlike your current zoning ordinance where there's probably a threshold where you can come to a tipping point, go too far, and taking something down and putting it back. But if it's there, it's there. So we've got, in essence, as you say, the grandfather clause provision in there. So what's there is there.
Okay, thanks.
Questions, anyone?
What action do we need to take on this, Mayor?
What happens next, Kelly?
On the council agenda for tonight, there's an action setting date of public hearing. So I would assume if there's any other questions, you'd want to send them over to Eric Schrader?
That's about all for now. Any other questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Good job, Brian.
Terrific, thank you.
Now, I have been told it is time to call this meeting to order. Would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Juwan?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda and the minutes of January 2nd, 2018 is proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. Okay, I would ask for a motion to approve the travel request as presented.
I make a motion to approve the travel requests, and they are one, and that is for Kent Shankle, the Director of Cultural and Arts, to pick up art from or buy Bobby Mullin hyphen Kramer and Woody Long at Memphis, Tennessee, Santa Rosa, Florida, and Gadsden, Alabama, with the amount not to exceed $925, January 9th through 14th of this year.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have it approved as presented, thank you. Entertain a motion on the preauthorizations to expend over $1,000.
Move for approval for preauthorizations to expend over $1,000, build and maintenance $3,640, to replace the fire alarm master control panel for the Waterloo Public Library. Clerk's office, $36,206.30, cost associated with the 2017 Waterloo City election. Fire rescue, $2,000, service and maintenance on engine 304. Leisure services, $7,600. Rental heavy equipment to dredge pond on gates 12 and 13 and the pond on 11 at Warren Memorial Golf Course. Planning, $5,700 to prepare the ALTA survey and preliminary and final plats for Brock's second edition. Waste management, $10,691.60 for the pump and motor repair includes repair kit, cable wire, reconditioned rotor, labor, and accessory parts for lagoon wet well pump. And lastly, waste management, $4,126 for the six-inch dessert butterfly valve with Alma Actuator for number three WAS Tank Airline.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Terrific. All are approved as presented. Then I make a motion under the budget line items to be amended. First motion to approve the budget amendment to use carryover cash in the golf improvements project in the amount of $4,569.78 for golf course dredging as submitted by Leisure Services. Is there a second?
You can read all three.
Second on both? Take one, take four, two.
Oh, take them both? Okay, I'm sorry. Second budget line item to be amended, approve the project budget for the Ainsborough Avenue Improvements, Blackhawk to Downing Streets, funded 80% with estate grant in the amount of $277,600 and a city bond fund of $69,400 as submitted by Traffic Operations.
Second.
Okay. Discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Okay, on to bills payment as contained in accounts payable invoice report dated January 8th in amount of $2,973,786.14 be received, kept on file, approved, and forwarded to the full council. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's City Council meeting. Let me see, Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schimpf?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Juwan?
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a full council this evening. Right now, I'd ask if you would join in a moment of silence right now, and after which Councilman Jacobs will do the pledge. All right, thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Hart, I'd like to move approval of the agenda as agenda with the minutes of January 2nd special session and the minutes of the January 2nd regular session, noting that the agenda needs to be amended to reflect that in item 1B3D, if we could change the expiration date to read 12/31/2020.
Second. All right, the motion has been made to approve an amended agenda, and I will probably ask council for some leeway on this. We have some Hoover Middle School students who are supposed to be here at 5:30, and I would ask if there can be some flex. Oh, they're here? Okay, all right. That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have it. So right now...
Where are they?
If... All right, welcome, welcome. We are ready for you, if you're ready. Oh, yeah. Oh, wow.
They each try to speak from standing in different places. Do you want them behind the class? Do you want them in front where you can see them?
Yeah, if you would like to, trying to think of the best way, should you make the presentation to the audience or us? All right, so if you want to come up here, I do have a microphone, and we can do it that way. So you can face the, face the audience.
Do you want them to each hold it, Mayor Hart? Would you like?
Sure.
Will it pick them up when they're speaking?
They can come on up here and get close, and we can hold the mic and make sure they're heard.
I'll run through on this.
You have a hot tub.
Bionic Bandits.
Hi, we are Team 4766, Bionic Bandits, and we have a big problem. There are a couple spots on our school sidewalk that flood every time it rains.
This happens because the school and sidewalk prevent water from soaking back into the ground. What can we do to fix this?
I know, we could build a rain garden.
What's that?
A rain garden is a garden that absorbs the urban runoff and extra water into the ground.
It also has tons of water-loving plants that also absorb water into the ground.
It helps prevent water from pulling up on areas like our sidewalk.
This is the perfect idea because it has a lot to do with water and helping our school reduce water for kids to get wet and dirty in.
Exactly. This is where we will place our garden.
The total cost will end up being $1 to $5 per square foot. We are raising money and getting grants to build this garden.
These are the plants we'll be using.
A rain garden is a perfect solution to our problem at our school, urban runoff.
The problem we chose is excess water created by urban runoff, and the solution we identified is rain gardens. Urban runoff occurs when extra water runs off of man-made surfaces. Then this water cannot be filtered back into the soil. Rain gardens collect this water by filtering it into the soil and back into the aquifer so it can be used again for human usage.
We researched many other ideas related to water and met with several guest speakers before we chose our project. Matt and Danica from AmeriCorps and Josh from the Blackhawk Soil and Water Conservation District came and talked to us about many issues with water. Rain gardens and urban runoff really spoke to us.
Some of the plants you can use in a rain garden include Columbine, long-headed cone flower, jack-in-the-pulpit, and prairie smoke.
A rain garden is used to stop urban runoff from flat rooftops. The average size of a rain garden is 30 by 20 square feet. The biggest rain garden in the world is 4,292 square feet. Did you know that a rain garden can also be called a soil?
Of course, rain gardens do come with expenses. You will need tools like shovels, mulch seeds, and hose nozzles to build and maintain a rain garden. The total cost will be $1 to $5 per square foot or $220 to $290. To maintain a rain garden, you will need to rake debris, care for plants, and remove as needed.
Mr. Kish met with our team to talk about his greenhouse. After meeting with him, we all decided that was a good idea to combine our rain garden idea with his greenhouse.
We chose the location for a rain garden because there's an depression in the ground which floods the sidewalk. There is also a catch basin which gets flooded by all this extra water.
We sat down with Josh Bulke to plan out all the details of our rain garden. We walked, he walked us through a formula to determine the size and shape of our rain garden based on our school's problem. We chose a kidney bean shape and our plants and border wall material.
How will we be maintaining this garden? Who would want a job like this? We are wondering the same thing. We put sign-up sheets around our school to apply. We have teamed up with the Horticulture Club for this garden to get what it needs. Director of Operations for Waterloo Schools, Marty Metcalf, helped us with a long-term plan to take care of it.
We shared our project idea with many others. We created posters for our school and neighborhood, spoke to the Horticulture Club at Hoover, and spoke to the other FL team at Hoover. We also presented to many professionals, including AmeriCorps workers, Waterloo School Board, and the Waterloo City Council, including the mayor.
How will we pay for this? We have a way. We sold glow sticks and suckers at Hoover Middle School. We collected pop cans and bottles from families in Evansdale and Betts. We then applied for agriculture in the classroom supplement grant. We have so far raised $350.
In conclusion, our team found a very simple solution.
Rain gardens?
To a very complex problem.
Urban runoff.
Thank you for listening.
I think I'll speak for everyone. Absolutely impressive today. Great job. And I know that gentleman right there, Jamie, and Eric Thorson in our engineering office would, are absolutely happy about this project. So how did you end up choosing this particular one? Because you could have chosen several of them, couldn't you? How did you choose this one?
So we had some guest speakers come, and they gave us some options, and we all decided like what would be the best one and like how would it help us? And so we all came up with rain gardens.
Well, I'll tell you, with students like you that are thinking about our environment, thinking about swales and rain gardens, we are absolutely happy, and we know that our future looks bright with all of you guys in leadership. So thank you so much. Keep doing the good work that you're doing. And all of the council are here. If you ever want to invite more council members to come out to the school as well, like I've been, I think you'd have some very great people to come out and listen to. So thank you so much. Thank you. Have you raised all the money you needed to raise? Rule number one, they always say never, not yet. Absolutely.
Thank you, and they are available to talk to you guys about how rain gardens can be used for Waterloo's urban runoff, anytime you want them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you too as well for all your work you're doing with the students also. All right, we just had a presentation. It is now it is time for oral presentations. Your opportunity to address the City Council and the mayor and share some thoughts that are on your mind. So first up.
I'm Duane Hilers, 1205 and a half Bishop Street. I got a bill from your Water Works for putting in a shut-off valve out in front of the property that I own. This shut-off valve was put in four years ago, brand new. And then the city had somebody come along and do the handicap ramps. And when they did the handicap ramps, they bent the water meter or the water shut off. I went over and talked with the lady, I think it was Mary, I'm not sure of her first name at the Water, and she said, "Talk with the city." Well, I went back over today after they did this in the middle of, well, we had to shut it off right away because they didn't pay the bill. Well, that was months ago. They still ain't shut it off, even though they got a new water meter in. And this is city obligation. They had somebody put in the ramp and bent the meter or bent the pipe for $1,600, and then another $197 for the Water Works saying it's our general overhead, 15%. Well, I didn't know they had overhead when some private construction company did the job, and I'd like the city to take care of it. I presented this to the city attorney, and he said, "Sue us."
All right, so you've already given that document. Are you familiar?
No.
Do you have a copy of that, Mrs. Eller?
I have a copy of the bill.
All right, so that's... All right, so that's what you have right there?
Yeah.
All right, so what I'll do, I'll send it over to Eric, and I'll send it over to Matt. Let them take a look at it, see what's going on for the sidewalk portion of it, and then for the overhead. And then, somebody get back in contact with you to say yea or nay, or whatever the situation is, but-
The other problem that I have is the one I brought up here, what, two months ago, on Litchfield Drive? That the city never graded the road, never plowed the road, never picked up the trash that's on it. And it's still the same thing. I brought that up to you a second time. My guys have cleaned the road, hauled the garbage, we have plowed the road, and now it's snow. We're taking care of it, but the city never graded it, ever. In twenty years, my brother and I took care of that road, and we just got fed up with the trash being dumped there because it's dead end. And everybody drives in there, right up to our property, throws their trash bags full. And I did take some of the identification out of it, and I turned that over to the city attorney also.
I will, I will call you by Wednesday.
The other question is, is the dead-end road, why don't the city give it to me?
I will call you-
Nobody takes care of it.
I will call you by Wednesday. Give me a couple of days to look at it, and I'll call you myself.
Thank you.
All right, who else would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
And viewers, this is Bruce W. Cazzer, Turov Retired Departments, Waterloo. I'm calling for everybody that needs some help with accessibility issues, whether you're disabled or not. If you have a need, please contact me, make me aware of it, so I can help address the situation. I can't think of everything, but I'm going to do my best to help make this place, Waterloo, a better city for everybody. Whether you're disabled or not, I want you to enjoy all the benefits of the city, the advantage of all the special events, of all the the great things about Waterloo. Thank you.
All right, Bruce, if somebody wanted to send you a letter or some correspondence, you, what would be your address you didn't mention?
Okay, my address is one oh six East Third Street.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Number three oh seven, Waterloo, Iowa, five oh seven oh three.
Okay.
Thank you, Candy, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
John Sherbin, seventeen fifteen Robin Road. This is just an idea that I have no clue is any good, but you know, we've, we're looking to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars for our evidence room and some other things, and we've got this really neat building over here called the Johnstone Building. And it's a little bigger. It's a pretty sound building, I understand. I've never been inside it, so I don't know for sure, but and it might cost us a little bit more money to take it over now, but it's got a warehouse that we could park vehicles in. There's a lot of different things. We pay pretty heavy money for storage over here on, for our city mowers and whatnot. That's just a block away. Maybe we should consider some of our buildings that we got here because it's, it looks like it's in pretty good shape. And that would save us in the long run because, you know, demolition and stuff, I think we, we should look at some of this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Sherbin, just, must be thinking alike. Just, I think it was a week before last, I directed one of our staff members to take a look at that actual site. I don't know if it's usable, but we are taking a look into it. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time.
I move that oral comments be received and placed on file.
Dug it. A motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we move on, there was, I failed to mention, last week, we had a passing of, of one of our city employees, Cheryl Schultz. And she had been with the city of Waterloo and our library for about fifty-three years. So, talking about dedication and spending a lifetime at the city. I failed to mention it last time, but I wanted to make sure we acknowledge that today. All right, yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda as presented.
Check it.
A motion has been made with the second, council. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
My rule is out of order. Mrs. Klein, Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf, or Schmidt, excuse me, and Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Public hearings, number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Do we not need to pay the bills?
Ah.
Do we not need to pay the bills?
It was already part, it was already part of the consent, it was part of the consent agenda.
You have to read the amount.
Yeah, we need to, can we, can we notate the bills payment of?
And this would be for one A under the consent agenda. The amount of bills is two million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and fourteen cents.
So, the bill is noted. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, item number two-
Yes, sir.
Is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. And that's for the purchase of one base-model, mid-sized, all-wheel-drive SUV for the motor pool.
Second. A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specification, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. A motion has been made with the second, council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, as I'm looking at these bids on here, looks like we're going with Bill Caldwell out of Hudson, right?
Yes, sir.
Even though it says Waterloo on here. But we picked the one for twenty-eight thousand. Is there a reason why we didn't go with the ones that were cheaper?
Who's that, Sandy?
Sandy Greco, interim Public Works Director. The reason we went with an Edge because of the size. The Escape and the, and the other Volkswagen are a lot smaller, and these vehicles sometimes have to carry two to three to even four people out of the city on travel requests. So, we went with a little bit larger. It's about the size of an Equinox and, and that. So, we didn't feel that we needed to go as big as a Traverse.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, Sandy, what would be the purpose of this vehicle?
Okay, we decided, talking to the, to the mechanics and, and other departments, that, right now, we have too many vans and a vehicle, and a pallet. One of those is going to be pulled out of service and either sold, or, well, the vans won't go to another department. But, so they'll be sold, excuse me, by auction. So, this one at least, because there is a lot of travel out of town during the wintertime, and this is a SUV with all-wheel drive, so it will be the safest one for anyone to take. And our vehicles are used a lot by all departments in the city.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, Sandy. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Next one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, madam clerk.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, madam clerk.
Our first bidder was Bill Caldwell Ford. They provided a bid on a Ford Escape of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars, and also on a Ford Edge in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, ninety-seven dollars. The second bid was from Community Motors Company Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided a bid on a Chevy Traverse in the amount of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Third bidder was Withem Auto Center of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided a bid on a Volkswagen Tiguan in the amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Bill Caldwell Ford of Hudson, Iowa in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, ninety-seven dollars.
Second. A motion has been made with the second, madam clerk.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
All right, thank you. I think I was remiss in my duty once again by not acknowledging our board appointments that came all the way to the city council meeting. We have, is Randall Miller or Melvin Whitworth here? Or Marilyn Robinson? Also, we have Eric Rittlin for our Culture and Arts Commission, if you would please stand. And also, Ron Welper for our Waterloo Water Works Board, if you would both please stand. Thank you so much for signing up to, to serve on our boards. We look forward to a great relationship and the generation of some ideas on those boards. So, thank you so much. All right, thank you. Number three, that hearing was canceled, and we set a date of hearing for... What date was that? Which one was it? Okay, for bid opening on January eighteenth and public hearing the twenty-second. So, that's a change for that one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do you want that read into the record?
I thought I just did, but somebody else can say, "Hearing canceled." That's how we got to the subject.
Okay.
No, do I need to do it differently? Or should a council?
However you guys would like to do it.
I want to do it right.
If someone could just say-
If you were reading to a path.
Mr. Mayor, regarding the Phelps used pavilion playscape project, the hearing has been canceled.
All right, thank you.
At this time.
You need a second on that?
And reschedule.
Nope.
I second that.
All right, so that is read into the record. Could someone take three, four, three and four, I mean, four and five, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number four is a resolution approving acceptance of improvements of the Summerland Condos North First Edition, performed by David Schmidt Construction of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond. Number five is a motion approving final quantity summary for a net increase of five hundred, ten dollars, eighty-four cents for the FY twenty-sixteen Sidewalk Repair Program Zone Six and Trail Repairs Contract Number Nine Zero Two, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Any questions on these items? Anyone out in the audience or council?
Good evening, Bruce W. Cazzer, Turov Tower Departments, one oh six Waterloo. I'm addressing the sidewalk repairs. I would like to have somebody from, whether me or somebody else on the ADA Compliance Commission, be there to give advisory capacity-type comments as they're repairing the sidewalks, to make sure it's done right and accessible for everybody, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank Candy.
Okay, thank you. Madam, madam clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'd just like to say for the record that the gentleman in item number four, even though he knows how to spell his last name correctly, is not a relative of mine. And for the record, I vote yes on both those.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We can take, can we take six, seven, and eight together?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving completion of project recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by B&amp;B Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa, at a total cost of three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, sixty-six cents for the fiscal year twenty-sixteen Sidewalk Repair Program Zone Six and Trail Repairs Contract Number Nine Zero Two, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond. And number seven, a motion approving final quantity summary for a net decrease of twenty-four thousand, three hundred, and that was a net decrease, of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, two cents for the fiscal year twenty-eighteen Sidewalk Repair Assessment Program Zone Seven Contract Number Nine Thirty-One, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number eight, a resolution approving completion of the project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by B&amp;B Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa, at a total cost of three hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and five dollars, ninety-eight cents for the fiscal year twenty-eighteen Sidewalk Repair Assessment Program Zone Number Seven Contract Number Nine Thirty-One, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Are there any questions, council, community? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take number nine by itself?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the Iowa Department of Transportation's federal aid agreement with the Iowa Clean Air Attainment Program Funding, number twenty-seventeen dash ICAAP dash zero five for the Amesboro Avenue Edition, parentheses, fifth lane and revised traffic signal, project number STP dash A dash eight one five five, parentheses, seven five seven dash eight six dash oh seven, in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That's eighty percent, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred ICAAP, ICAAP, with twenty percent local match of sixty-nine thousand, four hundred by the city of Waterloo, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Check it.
A motion has been made with the second. Questions, questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we get a little bit more overview on this and what, what exactly is happening? Had a constituent contact me and wanted to know if we're acquiring land over this at all by changing this, which I don't believe we are.
Sandy?
Sandy Greco, interim Public Works Director. I don't know where to start here. Yes, we are going to obtain a small strip of land. We have worked with planning and also engineering on this. The, the landowner, property owner, has been notified. We did meet with them one time when we started the application. The agreement was, if we receive the grant, we would come back to him. We, he, he needs a certain amount of stalls to park his cars, and we have arranged that, that he will have that amount, okay? With, with this small sliver of land that we need. That's the only property that we will purchase, and I'm not sure what else.
If you, just, if you, I think you just want some overview for folks that are watching.
Okay, and, and what we're doing basically is, this is to add the fifth lane in the center from Blackhawk down to Downing, from Downing to University Avenue, the fifth lane is already there. This in turn will also work with the University Avenue project. It will clear the left-turn lanes. It will make traffic progress faster and, and safer through that whole channel. We will be redoing the signals. They will be put back the way they were with left-turn protects, protected left turn- turns. Um, it will also clear that intersection faster and a lot safer than it is now. So, basically, those are the changes that are going to be made. Um, it'll be safer to turn left into the businesses, and, um, it'll keep traffic moving.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sandy, so we have negotiated a figure with that property owner, so we...
We have not negotiated a figure yet. We have talked to them.
Okay.
And we, we don't go any farther than that, really, on any city project until we know if we receive the grant or not. Because if we don't receive the grant, there's no need to, to go any farther.
Okay, but now that we've got the grant, what if the property owner decides to have a audacious value in his mind for what that property's worth, and we've already accepted the grant?
Noel can answer this one now. Noel Anderson, Committee Planning and Development Director. Um, and Sandy's exactly correct. There's one acquisition. I think there's three temporary easements, so there's two other property owners, the Domino's building, and then the, there's a small chiropractic one that mainly that's for grading and all that after the project is, is completed. But, the one acquisition is of the, uh, it's the former car wash facility, now a car sales facility. We have spoken with him about, um, there's different methods we can use. There's a compensation value you can use using the existing, uh, assessed value, price per square foot and things like that. Obviously, if he doesn't agree with that number, we'd have to go to an appraisal, um, of the property. Um, if he doesn't agree with the appraisal, then he has the ability to get his own appraisal, um, and we can look at that, or we can end up going to condemnation since this is for a public purpose.
Thank you. And we have had conversations prior, prior to this, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you, Sandy.
Forest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. There are residential properties that are affected even though they are not bought out. I've talked to, uh, three of them this last weekend, and none of them have been notified about what's going on, when it's going on, or, you know, whether it's going to affect them. I think, uh, with transparency, they should have been sent a letter and said, "This is what we're looking at." Uh, we keep talking about transparency, but one of them was quite upset. She said, "What if I lose my front yard?" I said, "I don't think that's going to happen," but nobody knows, you know? If it's going to cost too much on one side, maybe they'll go to the other side. Thank you.
Uh, John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. That, uh, has been my thorn for a long time. The test, the, uh, amount of money we spent to have that test done was $7,000, $8,000, I don't remember exactly. And, uh, we re-timed the lights and then we did the test. I'm thinking that maybe we should have done the test and then maybe, uh, went about to see how the traffic flow was. That's been there for years. It's not been a problem. Now, all of a sudden, it is. That piece of property that you guys are talking about, I think that gentleman paid about a million dollars for that when they first bought it, so this isn't going to be a cheap deal. This figure that we're firing on is probably just a very small percentage of what that land value is going to go for, although we're not taking the building down, you know, every time it gets smaller. I, it, it don't make, uh, uh, traffic flow. The fastest way right now, because nobody will re-time the lights or do anything, is to go down to Downing, turn right, go one block, going back at Burger King, go a block and a half, and you'll beat everybody down at the intersection there by Ainsborough. That road has always worked reasonably decent. Uh, it's timed. You have to sit on one side or the other on Ainsborough for quite a little time because those lights are offset, and that's all you do is you burn gas. I thought this, you know, according to the figures, this is supposed to be an energy-saving deal. Well, when you pull up to one side or another, and always, when you come off of Blackhawk and you get to Downing, you'll stop. And then you'll stop at, at, uh, the highway, or at, uh, Ains, uh, University. So, I don't know what kind of timing was or whatever it is, but maybe we ought to re-study this and see exactly what we really need to do there, because the traffic used to flow really good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bruce Casur again, 106 East Third Street. Here's a comment, suggestion. When we talk to the Hoover's junior high students, see if they have some ideas, how they can effectively change this, make improvements. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. Uh, I believe I heard that we only have one piece of property we have to worry about, and that's where the laundromat used to be, where the car lot is now. Won't this affect the other strip mall there where the gas pumps are and, and Domino's? And, uh, I heard something about the chiropractic, but, uh, aren't we going to have to buy that whole lane all the way from Downing to, to, uh, Blackhawk? Not just pay for the one property where the car lot is? I thought I heard that comment made.
Okay.
There was only that one lot.
Is that your only question, sir?
Yeah.
All right. Sandy, do we have to, uh, purchase the strip mall and, um, Mr., um, Dryer's question?
Um, no, the only, the only portion we need to purchase is a slight, I, I'm not sure what the footage is right now, um, pretty much on the corner of, it'd be the southeast corner of Downing and Ainsborough.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if my, if I may understand that, then we already own that property that's in front of, uh, Domino's and all that? So we can widen that to a lane width? I, I guess I'm confused.
We, we won't need to, to, um, purchase any property there.
So you're going to just make the, make it wider at, from, from Toffees North?
It'll be five lanes from, um, Blackhawk to Downing.
Thank you, Sandy.
Mahela Els at 903 Downing, that's actually my driveway that you guys are talking about, but it's already five lanes down there by the gas station, and then it goes down to four. So they'll just need from where the Toffees parking lot is to get up to the lights, to get that fifth lane all the way through.
All right, thank you. All right, I think, uh...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So can we verify if the residents were notified of this properly? Um, because one gentleman had mentioned that maybe not the case. I don't know if that's true or not. And then also, can we get a better idea of how much land we're acquiring, what slight means? Uh, we got to have a little better idea of how much land it potentially would be.
Sandy.
The property owners were not notified by mail at this time, um, because we're not going to be affecting them in any way, um, property-wise. So, once, once the grant is awarded, if we get the grant, which we have now, if you accept it, then we go and we will explain what's going to take place. It's not going to affect them. Excuse me. If it, if it does in any way, it's going to be maybe a little bit of grading that we'll come back and replace. But, um, it's mainly all on the other side where the businesses are that's going to be affected. If it's like Noel said, for easements and stuff, and that would be why work is being done.
So is it mainly, or is it all on the other side? Is it affecting the other residents at all that were not notified?
No. During construction, you know, because of course, everybody's going to be...
Sure. And so we're voting on the, really, the grant tonight, but if there's, is the only other vote that would take place then if there's a dollar amount for us to approve in terms of purchasing that slight amount of ground? Or is there another vote here?
No, that would come back to you, yes.
So this is more or less the final vote for council?
This is the vote to accept the grant, yes.
But, I think the question is, um, there, have, have you had communication with 903 Downing, the property or the resident that will be impacted at any point? We haven't asked if, I thought I heard earlier that, um, I thought I heard earlier that we reached out and just had some general communication about...
We, we communicated with the, with the businesses on the east side, because that's where the expansion is going. We did not talk to any residents on the west side of, of Ainsborough.
The one resident that will buy, that will purchase?
That will be the, the car lot. We, we've spoken with them. I, I believe staff had actually made contact as well with the chiropractic office and the Domino's building as well, because we were worried about how their configuration of their parking lot and all that was...
That is the only portion that was mentioned of property that we are going to purchase. Uh, any other disruption would be just what changes or if there's...
Construction.
Yeah, so, okay. And then, from that point, um, if this is approved tonight, then what happens with the people in that area? Do we reach out? I'm hearing from council that we need to reach out. I know there's things that we do via cold as far as how we reach out. Can you make sure?
If you approve it tonight, we'll, we'll begin the acquisition process, and when you're dealing with the DOT specifically, they won't let us go to the next step until we have all of the acquisitions done. So we'll have to do all that, um, while they're working on design. Once they would get to final design, Sandy would bring that back to council to approve the final design, to go out for bid and to build it. We could definitely have, if, if, if we, if we want to, when the final design or the design options are out there, we could definitely have some kind of a public meeting where people could come and look at the plans, or we could mail them out, however council would like to do it.
Well, my biggest thing there may not be, I'm just, what we need to do, and I'm hear, I'm hearing from conversation, we just need to reach out to folks and let them know. So if that's working through, um, our neighborhood services, if that's working with the, uh, councilman in that particular area, councilwoman in that area, just having some communication to folks, that's, that's what I'm hearing. So...
And, and we can do that.
All right. All right, other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mrs. Juwan.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Yep, whose ward is that?
It's a boundary.
And the edge of mine, but...
It's the boundary.
It's a boundary with three and one.
Okay, so we'll...
One side of the street's mine.
It's all ours.
It's all ours, yeah.
Neither side is mine, it's the citizens, so...
So we'll, we'll, we'll work it out.
Yeah, Stephen Sher...
You'll, you'll, you'll know what's going on. All right, number 10.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number 10 is adopting a resolution approving Convention and Visitor Bureau Board Recommendation for Funding a Hotel Motel Mini Grant, uh, application for the National Antique Tractor Polers Association in the amount of $2,477.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. Um, questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, I see Director Hall back there. So anyway, we can just have a quick explanation on the difference between the mini-grant and the actual grant cycle that CVB does, the folks at home.
Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Davis Hall, 218 Marilyn Avenue. Um, so the mini-grant is, uh, the portion that's typically reserved for our event and capital grants. Uh, those dollars that aren't spent, where those grants aren't scoring, uh, 70 percent or higher, uh, those go into the mini-grant pool. So this year it was like, I think, $21,000, uh, that was put back into that mini-grant pool. Our board then went in and, and scores these grants. Um, it's a $3,000 cap, so it's a lower threshold, but it allows us to provide some funding for things that, that we wouldn't normally otherwise be able to do. So for instance, um, just because of the fall of the fiscal year, um, events like my, my Waterloo Days, in order to get a grant through our traditional event and capital grant, because that event is in the second week in June, uh, and the fiscal year starts July 1, they would have to apply January 31st of 2018 in order to receive funds for